Go ahead and go straight to our 6.8, 10:40 a.m. item. Consideration of update on COVID-19. And today with us, we have Dr. Charlie Evans. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a pleasure to be back. And thank you to members of the Board and residents of Lake County. It's been eight weeks since I spoke to you last. I had a successful mission to Kenya, who also struggles with their fight against the pandemic. A lot has happened here in the last eight weeks. And I'd like to start, I believe you have a presentation from Sarah on the epidemiology report.
Yes, if we can get that shared screen to play, and then we'll go ahead and continue after that.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. This is Sarah Morikas with the COVID epidemiology update. It is September 13th, the afternoon of September 13th, recording this for you the morning of September 14th. I'm going to share the latest data on testing, test positivity, cases, and COVID deaths among Lake County residents, and the progress that's being made towards vaccination coverage. The graph on the left shows us the tests per 100,000 in the county in the black line and the state in the gray line. From here, you can see that Lake County, over the latter half of the summer, tested at fairly significant levels for Lake County, above 400 per 100,000. The only other time we saw testing at those levels was during the winter surge. The state is testing at a higher rate. However, in Lake County, we're seeing a higher testing positivity than the state in the gray here. Testing positivity has remained high in Lake County, ranging from 13%, whereas right now, to up to about 17, 18% earlier in the summer. We have nearly 5,800 confirmed cases in Lake County for a day, the most recent daily case rate of about 42 per 100,000. You can see our dramatic increase in cases in Lake County beginning in mid-June. State followed a similar trajectory, but stayed below 40 per 100,000, where we peaked very similar to our winter surge at about 70 per 100,000 the first week of August. And then we've seen it declined and sort of saw a plateau for the rest of the month of August. And now we're seeing a slight decline again. I wanted to share data for the counties that have the highest daily case rate for the week ending September 4th. Just to provide some context, you can see there are a handful of counties that are also in the Northern California region. Del Norte has been experiencing a tremendous surge over the last couple of months, as many are aware of. Shasta County, Butte County also have had some of the higher rates over the summer. Here is the Epi curve. Again, wanting to show you the peak of this summer surge, the first week of August. And then we saw cases begin to decline. This is also, this first week of August is when the state saw the peak with this surge and have had declining cases like Lake County since then. So for the week that we just finished, the week September 5th through Saturday, September 11th, we've identified about 150 cases to date. This will change as we receive more lab reports and case investigations. Here, I wanted to give you an update on Lake County COVID deaths by month as of September 3rd. So here we can see since July of 2020, when the first COVID death occurred, ranging to August 2021. The peak for deaths was in January of 2021, where we also saw the greatest number of cases. And that declined to zero COVID deaths in June 2021. And then we saw four deaths in July 2021, and another 12 in August 2021. Since this graph was produced, we've reported four additional COVID deaths. Yesterday, the hospitals in Lake County reported 14 COVID hospitalized patients. You can see this is higher than the impact on our hospitals. The surge has been quite significant, has been greater than we saw in the winter surge. And yesterday, they reported four COVID ICU patients. Again, you can see an impact beyond that is what we saw in the winter surge. And lastly, just want to share the latest data on vaccination status among eligible Lake County residents, so residents who are 12 years of age or older. And nearly 58% of eligible residents are fully vaccinated. About 1 in 3 remain unvaccinated, but we are seeing some slow but steady progress towards reducing the number of people who are unvaccinated. So there's about 18,500 eligible people right now who are unvaccinated. About 1 in 2 are people 18 to 49. About 1 in 2 people 18 to 49 are unvaccinated. About 1 in 4 adolescents, 12 to 17, are fully vaccinated. And we've seen some progress, and great progress among people 50 to 64. Nearly 4 in 5 are now fully vaccinated. But we still see the older age group, those 65 and older, really has been a, the line has been flat. We haven't seen much improvement in terms of vaccine, vaccination coverage in the older age group. And I stress that because about 7 in 10 of the deaths in Lake County have been among people 65 years of age or older. So it's particularly important for that age group. The graphs below show you the latest data on the seven-day average of people receiving their first dose of the vaccine, and people receiving their last doses are becoming fully vaccinated. And so what we hope to see through the fall and winter is this line continue to increase upward as people get their second dose and become fully vaccinated. That's the update for this morning. Thank you very much.
Great. So as I say, a lot has happened. Focusing on the positive, I love seeing that graph of people being vaccinated going, going up. It's a really, really positive thing. We now have a mobile van working in the county to help vaccinate people. So people that didn't have access before can get access. As Sarah mentioned, the case rate per 100,000 peaked up around 70, and it's down to 42. 42 is still very high, but it's coming down. On the downside, we have seen 20 new deaths in the county since this big surge that began in June. Spoken differently, 25% of the mortality that we've seen in the county since March of 2020 has come in the last eight weeks. And I fear that with current hospitalizations, there are going to be more deaths. And I want to emphasize that each one of these people has a family who is grieving right now. In my work as an ER physician, I see this day in and day out. Patients are isolated from their families because of the infection control restrictions. Patients who sadly die without their loved ones present. These daily scenarios are heart-wrenching. And I walked into the ICU on Sunday to discuss a critical case with an intensivist. And there were the intubated COVID patients all in their isolation rooms with nurses present caring for them. It's heartbreaking to see so many people on vents fighting for their lives, suffering without their loved ones. I think so oftentimes, we see numbers, but we don't really put the numbers with what is actually happening to people. To the nurses, doctors, and frontline personnel who are working hard every day, I say thank you. And to those families who went through this or are going through this today, you have my deepest sympathy. 90% of the patients who died were not vaccinated, and thus represent deaths that were preventable. And although we have given hundreds of vaccines in the past eight weeks, we still need to see that line keep going up and get those 18,500 people vaccinated. We can vaccinate our way out of this pandemic, and it really is the only path that we have. So I know that many who are listening to this presentation are not vaccinated, are not really interested in getting vaccinated. And it is to you that I address my comments today. I think it takes us all working together to get through this. I believe we can all agree on some basic goals of how to control this pandemic. I think we all wish to save as many lives as possible while suffering the smallest amount of morbidity. And we all wish to prevent the overrun of our institutions of healthcare. And we would all like to keep schools open so our children can learn and thrive in person. And we would all like to see our businesses kept open and successful. So how do we do that? At the beginning of the summer, we were struck with the Delta virus, that many thought at that time, we had already passed the worst part of the pandemic. I wish we were past the worst part. Unfortunately, the Delta virus, as you all know by now, is a completely different beast, so much more infectious than the mother virus was. Unfortunately, Lake County residents were hit hard. Our hospitals were filled by the end of July, and they remain very, very busy. There is much that is not understood about the surge and the decline of COVID infections. We've seen across the globe that when it strikes, the infection rate goes through the roof, and then two, three months into the surge, a decline occurs. This was how it behaved where it first came out in India, when they had their terrible surge last spring. The same occurred in the United Kingdom, and that is what we are witnessing in Lake County today. We had that surge, and the numbers are coming down. The surge is tapering off, but unfortunately, in India and the United Kingdom, the number didn't return to the same low baseline that we had in April and May. And the question in my mind, is that going to happen in Lake County as well? Will we go back to the low infection rates we had in April and May? If we don't, that's really dangerous, because we're likely to have other surges that will follow this, particularly with the holidays coming. This means that with all the hospitals working at maximum capacity now, we have few beds for those incoming patients. And this creates a huge problem. It means the routine emergencies that used to be absorbed into the hospital and cared for in an expeditious manner can no longer be cared for in that way. Many elective surgeries have had to be canceled. This is not unique to Lake County, but it's seen all over the country. When we were plagued with wildfires, we were told what we could do to curb the threat of losing our homes. You know, cut the grass, trim up your trees, clear 100 feet away. These preventive measures might save your sanctuary. On the case of COVID-19, it's the unvaccinated population that is the human wood the virus can still burn through. And the unvaccinated are the main human reservoir in which the virus can propagate and spread. It's not the only reservoir. We are seeing that vaccinated people can be infected as well, but they rarely get severely ill, and rarely require hospitalization. Greater than 90% of those hospitalized are not vaccinated. And greater than 90% of those who have experienced deaths were not vaccinated. Those have, that have been to the local EDs or have been hospitalized will tell you that the system is busting at the seams. I saw a recent letter written by the medical staff from Sutter Hospital in Lakeport pleading with all those to please go get vaccinated. I realize that most of you are young, who may not get very sick, but some will die, as we have seen and will continue to see. An alarming trend seen across the country is that many children are also being hospitalized, and that the number of child deaths is rising. This is probably because of the sheer volume of infections that we're seeing with the Delta virus, and probably not the result of increased virulence. But as more and more children get sick, we will see some that do become critically ill and require hospitalization. This is why it is crucial that everyone in that reservoir get vaccinated for our children. I am a big supporter of keeping schools open for in-person learning. There is a mandate that all students must wear a mask while in school. I realize many are not happy with this mandate. But outbreaks in schools are not something that we can tolerate at our level of hospital occupancy. Such outbreaks would likely lead to the true rationing of healthcare, as we are seeing in different parts of the country right now, in Idaho, Texas, Alabama, Mississippi, just a few. We haven't really discussed the quality of masking, because masking in itself is very, very important. But the quality of masking is equally important. Not all masks are worn properly, and not all properly worn masks provide the same protection. When the pandemic began, we encouraged all to use cloth or surgical masks and save the N95 or KN95 masks for the healthcare workers. We have overcome the shortage of the N95 masks, and they are readily available online and in many stores that sell healthcare supplies. A properly fitting mask that has two straps and seals around the mouth and nose will give you a much better protection than a surgical mask or a cloth mask. Any mask that does not cover the nose and mouth, I call these chin diapers, lend no protection. So I want to talk a little bit about what the Health Department is doing to fight the pandemic. As I mentioned, we have the mobile vaccination van. It vaccinated 138 people at the fair. We're looking to use the van to vaccinated school sites, farm worker communities, and homebound patients. And I encourage all to please take advantage of this resource while we have it. Doing contact tracing, we're focusing on the skilled nursing facilities, schools, and shelters. We have 10 contact tracers. We still have too many cases to trace them all, and that's why we're focusing on the skilled nursing facility, schools, and shelters. Overseeing testing, there's no longer testing being done by public health, but there are fixed sites and mobile sites that are working around 12 hours per day throughout the Lake region. As you probably are aware, we had an outbreak at the jail, I believe 76 cases, 13 of which are still active. It seems that that's coming under control. We can speak more about that if you wish. Epidemiology, as you saw the careful report that Sarah gave, we're collecting and analyzing the data to more accurately assess how to best proceed in our fight against the Delta virus. So in my full-time job as an ED doc, I ask most every patient I see if they have been vaccinated, and if they are not vaccinated, I ask them to explain why not. I have had many meaningful conversations as a result. Perhaps the most common reason I have heard is that people are busy with work with family, and they haven't gotten around to it. People have to get around to it. It might be that they don't want to tell me why they haven't been vaccinated, but we've never had a vaccine that's safer than this one. We've never been more confident that promoting such a vaccine as these mRNA vaccines. There's been over 300 million of the vaccines given in this country, and not a single attributable death to the mRNA vaccines. If you are not vaccinated, please make an appointment with your primary care doctor to discuss the benefits of the vaccine. With the current surge with the Delta virus, all unvaccinated individuals are in grave danger of a serious infection. Although our numbers have dropped, the circulating level of COVID-19 Delta virus is still very, very high in our community. This is a smart virus that is looking for a host to infect. Just as forest fires look for wood to burn, the virus is always looking for a body to infect. For the levels of circulating virus, it will find you if you are in the community and not properly masked. Some people are holding out, thinking that they will be covered by the herd immunity as we approach larger numbers of people being vaccinated. This was something spoke about early on in the pandemic, when we thought that it could reach 80% vaccination rates that we would have herd immunity. Unfortunately, with this virus, it's very unlikely to happen. In Israel, where over 80% of the people eligible for vaccine have got it, they are still seeing surges amongst the unvaccinated. And those surges are overwhelming their hospitals. The infectivity of the Delta virus is very high, and will find you if you're not protected by the vaccine. It may find you even if you are protected by the vaccine. But the likelihood of illness requiring hospitalization or leading to death is 10 times greater without the vaccine. I want to make a special plea to also protect some of the most vulnerable in our community, pregnant women, elderly, and children. Throughout the state and nationally, we have seen a number of unvaccinated pregnant women become infected and ultimately die of COVID. Such a tragedy. Some of these women have had emergency C-sections before death to try to rescue their unborn babies. If you are pregnant and not yet vaccinated, please call your obstetrician or provider today to discuss vaccination. Vaccination is strongly recommended by the American College of Obstetrics and Gynecology during all trimesters of pregnancy. As Sarah mentioned, there's still a significant percent of people over 65 who have not been vaccinated. Regardless of how healthy you are, you are at grave danger of risk of serious illness from the Delta virus. The majority of people who are dying are still elderly. Please make an appointment with your doctor to discuss how best to protect yourself. And finally, children. Many are asking how they can get permission for vaccinating their children under 12. Unfortunately, we don't have such a vaccine. Maybe by the end of the year, we will. Although with the mother virus, we did not see many children infected. This is not the case with the Delta virus. As a result of the increased number of infections, we are seeing increased numbers of hospitalizations. In areas where vaccination percentages are low, we're seeing the ICUs for children overrun and overloaded with COVID patients. If you have children under 12 who have a chronic illness or are immunosuppressed, you should call your doctor and discuss with them how best to protect your child. If you restrict their world to interacting only with those who are vaccinated, they will be safer. They should wear a well-fitting mask, and preferably N95 masks. They should not be in school if there are active cases identified. When I leave this meeting, I will go back to the emergency department and continue to treat all those who present themselves. This message is to those who are not yet vaccinated. If you're a fence sitter and haven't yet decided what you want to do, please make an appointment with your doctor today to discuss it. It could save your life. If you're one of those who just won't consider a vaccine, I urge you to talk to those who have survived an ICU stay, or to those that have lost a loved one. The process is absolutely awful, and the suffering goes on for days, weeks, and sometimes months. The virus starts with a sore throat or malaise, then comes the headache and the fever, sometimes to 103 or 104. This is followed by severe fatigue and myalgias, vomiting, diarrhea. By day seven, you're coughing and starting to get short of breath. By day nine, you're gasping for air and making poor decisions because your oxygen level has dropped so much that your brain is not getting what it needs to think. Somewhere between day 10 to 12, you're so sick that you can't move, you can't eat, and you require everything to be done for you. Your respiratory rate is so fast, you can't speak more than a few words at a time. We put you in the hospital, but you have to say goodbye to your family. You go on a ventilator to breathe for you. You're sedated, such that you can't communicate with your loved ones. You're fed through IV lines and tubes, and other tubes control your elimination. In the best of hands, in our county and the counties in the Bay Area, only about 25% survive on the ventilator. Your family suffers with you, fearing that you will not survive. Their fear is well-founded, because this is all preventable if you're unvaccinated. So please, please, vaccinate. I'm sorry to paint such a graphic picture of what it's like to be ill with this virus, but seeing it day in and day out, it's really difficult. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Dr. Evans, and thank you for the work that you do on the front lines. I know it's a different picture to see and experience than to watch the news or just be involved in these discussions. I know that I have not seen that. I have been to the hospitals to discuss it, but with HIPAA compliance, only those that are allowed in the areas are allowed. And sometimes I wish that there wasn't that HIPAA, so we could really give a glimpse as what it's like to experience that, because I think that until we have that personal experience, whether it's through ourselves, a family, or a friend, that some people don't understand what exactly is happening behind those doors in our ICU departments, in our emergency rooms. And it is saddening that it continues to happen. And that, as you said, our percentages of those that are experiencing that are unvaccinated are still as high as they are, just keeps proving the point that there is one way to ensure and reduce greatly, not ensure, but reduce greatly, the potential risk of what this virus could do to either one of us. So thank you again for your words.
Yeah, and I want to say, each vaccination is a win. You know, it's one at a time. So for those listening that have family members who are reticent, you know, please work on them, because you can save their life.
Thank you. Any comments? Supervisor Pyska?
Dr. Evans, I also really want to thank you for your work on the front lines, and also for your work in Kenya. And it must be really difficult to contrast what's happening there with the lack of vaccines, with the availability that we have here, and the privilege that we have. So I have a question about testing. We have availability of a lot of home tests and rapid tests, but those tests don't, those test results don't really make it into our reporting system. And so I feel like we, there is a vagueness with our reporting because we have this out there. And so I just wanted to kind of hear your thoughts about that. And if people are coming down with the symptoms, should they do the home test? Should they get the PCR test? And just more about your thoughts on that.
So there are home tests, many of which are antigen tests. Some of those have a higher false positive rate than the PCR tests. So the PCR tests are still the preferred test. You know, we're doing a lot more testing than we did. Testing is a really good thing. And throughout the state, the counties in the state are doing more testing than we are in Lake County. You know, if you don't test when you're symptomatic, you're not going to know whether you're infectious. So if you're not feeling well, or if you were exposed to a active case test, and it doesn't matter which test you use, but test, and you have to stay away from others until you get those test results back. And that goes for everybody, including myself. I had friends over for dinner, and they brought their 21-year-old daughter. And she was not symptomatic that day, but the next day she was. And lo and behold, I had to go down and get my test. And you should get the test three or so days after you're exposed, and quarantine during those three days.
Thank you.
Anything further from Board Supervisors? I do want to highlight some of the data that was provided. We are seeing a slow and steady, and we'll take it, decrease in the percentage of our community that is unvaccinated. Of course, that is only our 12 and over population that we are currently looking at, since those are the only ones eligible for the vaccination. But that increase gives me hope that we will see a reduction in our hospitals in the future. It's unfortunate, what we do hear about is coming out of Peru and Brazil, is that there's potentially another variant coming through. And I believe as of yesterday, it was just stated that it has hit every single state here in the United States. So we'll see if that one becomes the top variant, or if the Delta will continue to be so, which in my opinion, I hope it continues, because we seem to slowly, as you said, we've hit a bit of a dip, and maybe we will continue to see it slide down. But it's just that the variants are there. They are coming out. And the best way is to protect ourselves and be as conscious as we can. And that includes, and we haven't necessarily talked about it a whole lot today, though you did mention masking, but that also includes social distancing, making sure that you give yourself enough room. That doesn't mean you won't enjoy yourself. I know that I went to a football game on Friday, and there was, it was very easy to be able to space each other and say appropriately in a very safe and cautious way. And so I think that we just need to continue to be mindful and cognizant of what we're doing, what others are doing, and to be on the defense and move if you have to, or put on a mask if you have to, if you're outdoors as well. And in my opinion, while I hate the mask, I don't know anybody that loves it, it is a simple thing to do to be able to reduce the potential of getting infected. a simple thing to do to be able to reduce the potential of getting infected.
You bring up a good point in that, you know, it's large gatherings, even outdoor gatherings, funerals, celebrations. You know, wear your mask at those events if you're around people that aren't in your bubble. And you know, the amount of virus in the community right now is every bit as high as it was at the peak back in January. And unfortunately, there's a lot of people that are infectious that aren't symptomatic. And that's why this is so crucial to wear your mask if you're not able to social distance.
Right. Thank you very much. And last comment before I go on to Supervisor Simon. I will ask people, please respect the rules and regulations that individual agencies or businesses request of you. I know that I was, I'm going to use the word appalled, that there are signs everywhere at the football game for everyone to mask up. And yet I'd say about 90% of everybody in the stands were not masking up. Would you light up a cigarette right on a school campus when the rule is you're not supposed to smoke? We need to follow the rules of the properties that we step onto or don't step on that property. I just, I feel that we are, there's a lot of disrespect in the rules that are being asked and requested of us when we go onto someone else's property. And we would expect the same if somebody came onto our property on how they should behave. And so I just want to put it out there. I know that it can be a bit of an annoyance to have to follow those rules, but you should not disrespect the people whose property you are going on to because you don't like the rules. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. Very much your presentation today. What I wanted to focus on today and just see, we had either Denise or someone on the phone, just to talk about where the, where you can get the test now with the mobile clinics that are around the county and also any vaccination sites too with any of the mobile clinics that are going around. So I don't have that readily. I do know some of the places, but if we could just get that information out one more time, it's the kind of the second week we've been rolling it. I know that a lot of folks are doing what they need to do as far as testing and also looking for those facilities in each district. It is, you know, being well-used because they have it coming out to them instead of having to look for something. So I just want to highlight that. Denise, if you could just put that up, I greatly appreciate, thank you.
Yeah, I'll be happy to. It's on our public health website and it gives all of the vaccination clinics around the county, days and times, and the vaccines that they're providing. There's also another sheet that provides all of the testing sites.
And once again, where can you find that information on your website?
It's on our public health website for the county and it says vaccine and testing. You click on it and everything appears up. They can also, yeah, they also can always call the health department or our Mohawk line is still in effect and our Mohawk email is still in effect. If anybody's having difficulty finding a location or signing up, we're happy to help.
Thank you.
And can you provide that contact information for the Mohawk right now?
It is, oh my God, if I can remember, 707-263-8174. And it's Mohawk, M-H-O-A-C, at lakecountyca.gov.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further comments or questions before we open it up for the public? All right, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. We're going to start with Julia Bono. And again, please give us your name and you have three minutes to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
We sure can.
Thank you. My name is Julia Bono. I have spoken to the board before on the subject and wish to preemptively remind the board and as medical advisors today that any move to mandate proof of vaccination for any type of public activity is an unconstitutional and preposterous impingement on individual freedoms that probably has much more to do with control than with public health. Furthermore, mandates are not properly legislated laws subject to debate and public input, so they should not be enforced as such. Also, any bribery, propaganda, or other forms of psychological and material coercion that may be used to induce your constituents to take what remains a recently developed medical procedure without long-term trials or informed consent about the side effects of the medical procedure and its ingredients before being administered with it remains unethical. Such actions would clearly violate the 1947 Nuremberg Code, which states that the voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential. This means that the person involved should have legal capacity to give consent, should be so situated as to be able to exercise free power of choice without the intervention of any element of force, fraud, deceit, duress, overreaching, or other ulterior form of constraint or coercion, and should have sufficient knowledge and comprehension of the elements of the subject matter involved as to enable them or him to make an understanding and enlightened decision. Coercing your constituents to take COVID vaccines could even be considered a crime against humanity, of which every member of this board could be culpable if even one individual is harmed by such pressure measures. Those harm could take legal action that each of you in the county may have to bear the substantial costs of. I do not approve of you taking this substantial financial risk on behalf of this county. I also want to draw attention to the very problematic nature of the vaccine's rollout. The suppression of viable COVID prevention and treatment options by the WHO, CDC, and mainstream media outlets allowed pharmaceutical companies to ram through, pedal widely, and profit massively from experimental vaccines that notably faced, failed to produce real immunity and appear to have caused substantial harm and even death to many individuals, according to the CDC's own VAERS database. Now, these vaccines and new booster shots are being actively promoted in a fear-mongering manner despite similar risks even to pregnant women and children, as we have just heard Dr. Evans do. These large drug companies and their medical establishment mouthpieces have basically been given carte blanche to spread substantially unfounded fear about this viral disease that is relatively mild in the vast majority of cases, to suppress news about vaccine harms and alternatives, and to promote and perform unethical experiments for profit on a large segment of the ill-informed public with their insufficiently tested injections. I find it inexcusable that Lake County's Board of Supervisors and its medical advisors have been forcefully promoting and facilitating this scheme in our county. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Elaine Zacker.
Hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. I have a question and a comment. The data Dr. Evans speaks of is for vaccinated and unvaccinated. In which group do the vaccinated fall if 14 days have not elapsed since their last shot? If those who received the vaccination but have not received, reached, excuse me, have not reached the 14 days are counted as unvaccinated, wouldn't that hide any cases or hospitalizations that result from vaccine injuries? According to the VAERS system, the VAERS reporting system that you can find on the CDC website, many of the injuries and deaths occur hours or days after receiving the shot. Only if there are three groups, unvaccinated, partially vaccinated, and fully vaccinated, would differences between unvaccinated and partially vaccinated be evident? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll get to the answers and the end of public comments so that Dr. Evans, I see that he is writing down some stuff as we speak, and so we'll get to those at the end of the public comment. Lisa Pavlov, you're next.
My name is Lisa Pavlo. I live in Clear Lake Oaks. Week after week, we hear of people in the community commenting before the Board of Supervisors with unfounded, just misinformation. And I just wanted to speak out today because I think what gets mixed, missed are all the people in your community who are just keeping their head down and doing work and they're masked and they're vaccinated. And I wanted to just give the experience of my family this summer as, as just, you know, comment. My husband had an exposure. He visits clients in his home. He is vaccinated. He masks. He received word on a Thursday that somebody he met with, a couple he met with also masked and vaccinated, tested positive on Wednesday. And on Monday after the Thursday where he found out, he went to the Lower Lakes testing site, he got tested, and on Wednesday he found out he was negative. So the masking worked even though he was inside and definitely had a close contact exposure. However, he lost work. He was out for six days quarantining. And so just for that reason alone, I would like to see spread in the community reduced. Secondly, my daughter graduated from college in May and a month ago started teaching kindergarten in Contra Costa County. She has 27 students, five years old, can't be vaxxed in her morning block. She has 28 students in her afternoon block. In the county that she's working, they have about an 80% full vaccination rate, but she serves a school that has a lot of low income and underrepresented kids, community kids. And none, she's had no COVID, no COVID in her class, and her school has not had an outbreak. They may have had one or two kids in the school, but it got handled. As a vaccinated person, she's tested once a week. Unvaccinated staff in her school are tested twice a week. Next is my son. He has worked at fast food in Yolo County in Davis all summer. He has also not been exposed. He is masked and he is vaccinated. So what I want to do, and me, I have gone to physical therapy. I mask and vaccinate. Also, I had an exposure. I got a same-day appointment for, I didn't have an exposure, I was symptomatic. I got a same-day appointment at Robinson Rancharia on a Saturday and it was easy. I got tested, I was negative, it was fine. The last thing I want to say is about the whole rights argument. There is no absolute right to individual freedoms in this country. I know that because I sat in law school in a constitutional law class for a year and I got tested on it a lot, and that's just a myth. So I just wanted to add that in conclusion. Thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you very much. Next comment is phone 1113.
Yes, hi, this is Dr. Will Tuttle in Daly Lake, and I'm, I have to say, really appalled at the fear and the deceptive nature of the way that this whole thing continues to be rolled out here, not only in Lake County, but in California and nationwide. And as you know, I've been speaking up because quite honestly, it's very unpleasant to listen to all this and to keep speaking. But I only do it because as a citizen, I care and I feel that we have to see the other side of this. And some people have talked about the back, these facts in prior weeks, but the fact that people are testing positive, you know, most doctors, they don't know what's going on in the lab. They send something out to the lab and it comes back and it's positive. They don't look, they're not trained to find out what the amplification rate is being used. And we found out that the amplification rates are different for people who are vaccinated. The CDC mandated a 25 amplification rate, which basically will not test anybody positive. And they still have a 35 to 40 amplification rate for people who are so-called unvaccinated. And so they get found out to be positive a lot more. So as Mark Twain said, there are, there's lies, there's damn lies, and there's statistics. And these statistics are being used to take away our rights. That's what, that's, this is, the whole thing is a pretext. I think there's a lot of people that understand that here in the county and they're not speaking up because they know it's kind, in their mind, they feel it's pointless to try to bring it up here. But I just think we have to realize there are very highly, highly qualified epidemiologists, virologists, and vaccinologists who have studied this in depth and who are being brutally censored in the media and by the AMA. And so if, if you listen to some of them, I mean, for example, Dolores Cahill, who's very well-respected from the Max Planck Institute, she basically says, and many others are saying the same thing, that this is a very dangerous vaccine. She's predicting that within two years, 90% of the people who have taken the vaccine will be dead. Mike Eden, who was the former vice president of Pfizer, again, he knows this industry inside and out. He's not quite so harsh. He says within three years, 85% of the people who take the vaccine will be dead. So we are talking about a genocide. And even though it's being covered up brutally, we're seeing already this, there's more people being killed by this vaccine than ever in history. There's no comparison. So for someone to say, especially someone in an authority, health authority, say that we know this vaccine is safe is beyond ludicrous. See, all the tests that were done on animals for decades before this, on this type of mRNA technology, the animals all died from antibody-dependent enhancement, it's called, where they, where they get a cytokine storm because their own immune system attacks them. All the animals died, so they could never really go to human trials because that would be unethical. So now we've gone to human trials on the whole world population and people are dying in record numbers. There's whistleblowers coming forth saying that the CDC numbers are grossly underestimated. There is at least 45,000 and probably a lot more have died. Some are saying it's over a million have died. And it's being covered up by hospital administrations, by the AMA, by the CDC, the World Health Organization, because as I've been saying, the World Health Organization and all these agencies have been co-opted and bought by the Pharmaceutical Medical Chemical Complex, which is vastly powerful and controls the media. And so I'm not getting paid for saying any of this. You folks are getting paid.
Your three minutes are up if you can finish.
Thank you very much. So I'm just, I'm just saying, I really hope that, that you will listen and look behind the curtain and protect people because that's your role. Protect us from the state and federal level. You're the local people to protect us. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Carlos Bono.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
First, I want to draw attention to the VAERS data on the CDC's own website, which indicates 675,593 adverse COVID vaccine reactions that include 14,506 deaths and 88,171 reports of serious injury as of September 3, 2021. My own sister took the Moderna vaccine and was hospitalized with a heart attack caused by a blood clot four days after the second shot, and she almost died. She subsequently had to retire from her job and is on four medications and has had to make considerable lifestyle changes due to her weakened health. I'd also like to point out that the so-called COVID-19 vaccines do not work well because they do not provide immunity, they do not prevent transmission, they do not cure the disease, and they simply mitigate the severity of symptoms in those who take them. This is proven by the overwhelming number of breakthrough cases in highly vaccinated countries like Israel, where more than 75% of the population is vaccinated. Because of the injections' inefficacy, the CDC recently decided to weaken the definition of vaccine from a product that actually produces immunity to, quote, "a preparation that is used to stimulate the body's immune response against diseases," end quote. Now, I'd like to address this PCR test, which has been the standard for diagnosing COVID since it was introduced in February 2020. Use of the PCR test to detect the SARS-CoV-2 virus will be suspended by the CDC in December of this year, apparently because a test is preferred that can detect and distinguish between COVID and influenza infections. Interestingly, influenza infections have virtually disappeared in the U.S. with about 700 deaths in the 2021 season versus 22,000 deaths the previous season and 34,000 deaths the season before that. The PCR test is therefore obsolete, will soon have its emergency use authorization withdrawn, and was never intended to diagnose an illness, according to its inventor. Regarding the FDA's approved approval of the Pfizer Comirnaty vaccine, the approved vaccine has not even been produced or distributed yet, so for all practical purposes, the FDA has approved a unicorn that remains a nonexistent fantasy. The Pfizer vaccine people we'll still be getting today remains experimental, especially for younger people. So do the Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines. I'd also like to add that none of these pharmaceutical companies are, are asking their, their people to get vaccinated. There's the, all the postal workers are also exempt from vaccination and so are the workers of Congress and their staff. and so are the workers of Congress and, and their staff. So this double standard exists in our, in our culture and it's disgusting. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Phone 2689.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
This is Christina Robertson and there's so much to respond to here every week, but I, I hear almost every week, I hear the word misinformation when someone speaks to COVID-19 solutions that are contrary to the mainstream narrative. This word misinformation, as well as others, other designations, are designed to frame an idea in such a way as to encourage dismissal of an idea or a thought and to discourage honest investigation. This is called contempt prior to investigations. Someone has called that. So those aren't my words, but they're good ones. Contempt prior to investigation. Our only hope for this pandemic is an early treatment protocol. Vaccines are not working. Vaccinated people are still transmitting the virus. There's just, the scientific debate has basically been shut down because people are being ignored and just what somebody said, it's, they're just not being listened to. Now I also want to talk about personal experience. Personal experience is not evidence, while valuable, it's just not evidence. So people who have worn masks, been exposed, not gotten sick, that's not evidence of anything. Many people have chosen to never wear a mask or receive a vaccination. They've also been possibly exposed and they did not get sick. So personal experience is not evidence, although it is valuable. I myself had a client call me and tell me she trusted this. She got her vaccination and after her second vaccination, she developed pneumonia, went to ER. And the long and the short of it is she's on oxygen for the rest of her life. She had, she had some health issues, some serious health issues and some specialists. What, when, but she didn't have anything wrong with her lungs. So now she's on oxygen for the rest of her life. That happened the day of the shot, the second shot Pfizer. She wound up talking to three of her specialist nurses. These three nurses also had adverse reactions. I asked my client, have you reported this to VAERS? And she said she didn't even know what VAERS was, which a lot of people don't. So I'm, I'm pretty sure that there have been many adverse reactions not reported. The three nurses that she spoke with after her experience also had problems, they're having problems breathing, not as severe as hers. Hers is a totally 100% tragic response. But the three nurses all had adverse reactions and I am done. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. We're going to go with Ahava Rose, since Elaine Zacker's already spoken. We'll get back to you, but let's go with new voices first.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors and Mr. Evans. Who is orchestrating an embarrassing abomination of healthcare.
Would you, would you please, would you please provide your name? And that's Dr. Evans.
Ahava Rose. And I am just here to reiterate that never has there been a coronavirus vaccine that's completely eradicated a virus. So of course you're going to see this over and over and you're never going to see an end to this. And you know, if people want to be safe, we need to start teaching people how to be healthy. If people want to administer effective medicine, we need to start actually doing science and looking at both sides of the spectrum and looking at the overwhelming evidence that ivermectin stops the virus. I also want to say to Ms. Pavlov that I have freedom and liberty as granted to me by my sovereign Creator. And it's not in the legal fictional world that you will find my freedom, but my freedom is not a myth. The other thing that I want to say is that I have had this virus. I do not cover my airways and rebreathe my toxins. I will never have a vaccination ever. And I'm not afraid and I trust my immunity. And as the judgments come out in all the law cases, lawsuits being filed against public health officers and chief health officers across the world, asking for an isolation of this sample, your souls will find judgment as you further the propaganda of this globalist narrative. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And it looks like the last of the hands went down. It must have been an accident to have the hand up. And so let's go ahead and bring it back. Dr. Evans, I know there was at least one question rather than just rhetoric and comments. Want to see if we can possibly get an answer for that?
Yeah, so first off, I wanted to reiterate that this isn't an experimental vaccine. This isn't a recently developed procedure. This is a vaccine that's been processed workings for decades. And we are so incredibly fortunate to have such technology readily available to us, having worked in countries where it's not. It's been approved by the FDA. It took a long time to be approved. The FDA has very strict criteria. And it is, it is a safe vaccine. The CDC does have a website where anybody, anybody who gets a shot can call and/or get online and report their, their reactions, the VAERS website. One should know that there's no restriction on reporting there. So there are many, many reports and the serious ones are all followed up on. And you know, when you have hundreds of millions of people who are getting a vaccine, within hundreds of millions of people, in any given day, some are going to die. And the statistics that have been looked at by the CDC have not put anyone who's been vaccinated with an mRNA vaccine to account for their death from the vaccine. So a lot of the information that's being put out there by some of the people who spoke is exaggerated and Dr. Tuttle, I don't know what kind of doctor you are, but when you talk about fear-mongering, you know, I see some of your comments is very disrespectful to those who have suffered so from this, from this pandemic. And, and I just want to say that this isn't something that's being made up. You know, this is a pandemic like we've never seen before in our lifetimes that is threatening the whole world. It's not just Lake County. It's not just California, United States. It's around the world. This isn't something that's made up. And if the people who are thinking that it's made up could experience what we see when we treat these people, you'd understand that. The question came up about how vaccinated versus unvaccinated people are being registered. I think people, Denise can correct me if I'm wrong, but until someone has immunity, they're counted as an unvaccinated person. And full immunity is six weeks after they're, they receive both vaccinations. Yeah.
And that is correct. The way that we've been explaining it to people is it's 14 days after your second vaccination. So that equals about six weeks, but some people do take longer to get their second evacuate, evacuate vaccine, sorry. So it's, it's 14 days past your second vaccination.
Thank you very much. Do appreciate that and just thank you for bringing it up. I think it needs to be at least stated from time to time. Anytime somebody says that they're a doctor in a conversation of public health, it can get confusing. I know that Will Tuttle's doctorate is a PhD in education and I'm sure that he rightfully deserved that PhD, but does not make him an expert in the medical field of public health or virology. Just want to make sure that's stated. We did close public comment and I saw a hand pop up, 4627. Please, we are running a little bit behind today. Please, next time, make sure to put your hand up before we close public comment. But there was definitely a vast opportunity for you to put your hand up. We're going to be moving forward today. Email us your comment or be back here again next week as we will be discussing this as usual in the coming weeks just to keep people posted as to what's going on. Are there any further comments or questions from the board, Dr. Evans, or just in general?
Dr. Evans, I want to thank you again for coming and I, we really appreciate your perspective and your experience. You know, and, and we have had 20 people die since the beginning of July and we've, we've mentioned them here before during our meetings. They are friends, they're families, they've left families behind. This is a tragedy for our county. And I, you know, I really appreciate your sensitivity in reminding us of that and your experiences day-to-day in your work in the trenches with this. So thank you for coming and being part of our conversation today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans, and I'm sure we'll be seeing you soon.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Trump.